And welcome to the Orangeburg City Council meeting. We would love to ask our Department of Public Utilities to come forward with the prayer, please.
Let us pray.
Ms. Warren.
Father, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for all who have gathered. We thank you for this council and the leadership. We pray that you will guide them in their good ways on this day. We ask that you bless this community and its people. In Christ's name we pray.
Amen. Thank you very much.
I'm calling that line. I'm in the meeting.
We have the appearance of Dr. William Mohna, Executive Director of Lower Savannah, Council of Governments. Would you please come forward, give us your name? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm passing leave. We have the consideration of April 1st, 2025, City Council meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been properly moved by, motion by Dr. Kalu, second by Greveous and Stroman.
Aye.
Are you ready for the question? All in favor, would you sign? Let it be known as aye.
Aye.
Opposes? Ayes have it. Okay, now we are ready for Dr. William Mohna.
Vice Chair, Council Members, City Administrator, everyone else. Thank you very much for a few minutes of your time. Just want to do a quick presentation, if I could, to let you know about the Lower Savannah Council of Governments and some of the things that we've been working on here in Orangeburg County and some of the different things that we work with here in the city of Orangeburg. Okay? Mission Statement, really our vision and mission is to work with people within the region. We do a lot of work with what we call low to moderate income folks in a number of our programs in aging, housing, as well as different municipalities and counties that fall within that category. We're almost 60 years old. We were started by Governor McNair back in 67. There are 10 councils of governments across South Carolina. We are comprised of six counties, Aiken, Allendale, Bamberg, Barnwell, Calhoun, and Orangeburg Counties. We have 44 board members. I am sorry that Mayor Butler is not with us this evening. He is on our board and is my past chair. And so enjoyed having him and his tenure with us, really appreciated that. As you can see, a couple of the other folks from Orangeburg County who are on our council, Janie Cooper Smith, Dolores Frazier, Joseph Garvin, Johnny Ravenel, Vernon Stevens, Harry Wimberly, and Senator Brad Hato. And I hear he's doing a bit better, so I'm glad to hear that. We are, like I say, six counties and 44 municipalities, about a little over 300,000 people. We have a number of different programs that we run at our level, Community Development Block Grants. We do some local government planning. We also work with EDA. Now, I'll tell you right now, we have two grants with EDA. EDA works with businesses, and so their interest has always been job creation. With Helane, we were able to get a half a million dollar grant to start looking at resilience across the region. Give you an example of resilience, another storm hits, the pump station goes out in a neighborhood or in an area. What we're trying to do is figure out how to make sure that that pump station goes back on quickly, how the communication happens between different organizations in order to make sure that things get back up and running the way that they need to be, you know, have a long time with jobs, homes, electricity, everything else being out. The other EDA grant that we have right now, well, we usually have is our planning grants, the three-year planning grant, but because of things going on in Washington DC right now, we have not received that grant, and we're still waiting on that. I may mention a couple of things going on in DC as we go through, because as you will see in just a minute or two, about 70% of our funding comes from the federal government. Some of the other programs that we run are Housing Consortium, which the city of Orangeburg is a member. We do aging and disability programs with our area agency on aging. We run tourism, but not here in Orangeburg County. Tourism for four counties, Aiken, Allendale, Bamberg, and Barnwell. Y'all are under a different tourism region, and so we do not do tourism here in Orangeburg. And finally, workforce development. Some of the four different divisions that we have, Human Services, Planning and Community and Economic Development, Workforce, and of course Administration, where we have tourism and marketing and finance. That's what I mentioned earlier. So, within our budget for this past year, and it was a healthy budget, mostly because of the American Rescue Plan funding. And we were receiving and dealt with a lot of American Rescue Plan funds. If you see up there, a little over $8 million of our funds came from the federal government. That's about 70% of what we receive on an annual basis. That money goes into a number of different programs. The largest one that that money went into in the past year is our aging programs, then workforce, and then it goes down from there, transit, community and economic development, tourism, and others. Last year, we had a budget of about 11.5 million. This year, it was closer to nine and a half, I'm gonna say. Like I said, the American Rescue Plan funding that came in the year before was significant. This year going through, it's about $2 million less. So here in Orangeburg County, started off with Human Services and Aging Programs. So I had up there that the Aging and Disability Programs are funded through the Administration for Community Living. As of last week, that's no longer true. That agency has been, well, removed by DOGE, and now that funding is coming through the Administration for Children and Families. Now, I say coming through, but the reality is that with the continuing resolution that you all saw passed back on March 14th, no money's coming through. That's just the reality, okay? Do you have any people from the press yet? Just wondering. The reality is that none of that money is coming through right now, that we usually spend for not just programs, but for a number of the services that we put out at the Council of Governments, ombudsman, working with the assessors going into homes, and working with the individuals, finding out what their needs are, and then pairing them up with what they need to the right programs. So there's a lot of funding that has not come through. We estimate this year, at least $600,000, if not more, from the aging programs that we have not received yet because of the continuing resolution and not receiving the money as yet. As I mentioned, it used to be the Administration for Community Living, and right now, it is the Administration for Child and Families. Also, tens of thousands of people have been laid off, and so we're wondering who's gonna be up there right now to move the money and push the buttons. And that's something we just really don't know right now. I'm gonna be upfront with you. Also, it mentions in here, we're compliance with the Older Americans Act. That still has not been authorized yet. We're hoping that they do get to that at some point, to reauthorize the Older Americans Act. It really is important for our seniors here in the region, but throughout the United States. Couple of the programs that we do provide and have over the past year, home-delivered meals and congregate meals. We work with Deanne Miller and the Orangeburg Council on Aging. They do a wonderful job of making sure that the seniors are looked after in this region, and we rely on them to get those home-delivered meals out there, as well as to work those congregate centers. We also offer homemaker services, information and referral, people just calling up and asking, you know, where can they get services for this or that, whatever it may be. We also offer respite and look after the long-term care ombudsman. And that is looking after the nursing homes and other facilities that the seniors are in, making sure that they're treated properly. And if they have complaints, they come to us, and we work through the legal channels to help them out with what they need. Janie Cooper Smith, Jeanette Goodwin, and Jimmy Boland are all on that committee. In the area of planning, we have a number of transportation plans, projects in Orangeburg County. If you're gonna take a look at this, you'll see a number of them. Two things, I gave you a handout. On that handout is information on the long-range transportation, public meetings that we're having on May 6th and May 8th. The May 8th one is gonna be in Holly Hill. So overall, in our long-range transportation plan, what we're doing is finding out, is information gathering, where are the accidents happening? Where are the issues? What roads need to be widened? What intersections need to be looked at? One of the issues that we've always looked at and have concern with is on Chestnut and all the different ins and outs and intersections there. And so we hope to be looking at a corridor plan for that area, just to see how we can make it work better, okay? We know that there's a lot of accidents and a lot of slowdowns there, and we're gonna be taking a look at that in the near future. You can see a list of the different transportation plans or projects here in Orangeburg County, a little over $22 million going on or plans to go on in the county. Janie Cooper Smith, Harold Young, and Preston McClung, who is the new county planner, is on that committee. Also in the area of economic and community development, we have our Home Partnership Program. The city is a member of that. We have completed two home project, rehab projects, this past year in Orangeburg County. That's one of those where it's one of those sweet spot things. House has to be bad enough to need it, but not so bad that it's gonna take, you know, $200,000 to repair. When we work with HUD funding, the biggest issue that we have with HUD funding is that they require that we bring the house up 100% to code. Problem is that sometimes Ms. Johnson just needs a new roof, okay? Everything else, you know, is not great, but it can be dealt with in better ways. But the reality is, she's gotta stop the water from coming in. And so HUD funding does not allow me to do that. I did, last year, bring a project to Senator Hato and asked him if he would help out getting some funding for that, but have not been able to receive any funding yet, just to be able to go in and help Ms. Johnson with a roof, okay? Mr. Miller with an HVAC unit, whatever it may be. Still working on that, but that's the kind of flexibility that we actually need, and maybe that would be one of the things that coming out of Washington that would help, is loosening the restrictions on some of the ways that we have to spend federal money. So right now, we did receive about almost $1 million in our 2024 action plan. Right now, any funding that we may be looking at coming out of Washington DC for our home program? We don't know what it's gonna be. It's still an unknown. We do have one-time ARPA money, and it's to fund and combat homelessness in the region. And my guy was down here in February talking with the Samaritan House, but hasn't heard anything from them since then. And we would love to be able to help them out with the programs that they run. They're so essential for those folks who are, you know, had a rough time. So the reality is, we'd love to hear back from them and see if we can help them with some of that funding that we got with the ARPA program in housing. In workforce, we deal with a couple of different programs, mostly as adult, youth, and dislocated workers. We also work with businesses themselves, with on-the-job training. And so a couple of years ago, when there was funding, we bought a mobile unit. That mobile unit goes to lots of different places throughout the region. We had to close our satellite offices in Allendale, Bamberg, and Calhoun, so that mobile unit gets out there, gets down to Holly Hill an awful lot. Says here that Orangeburg and North Orangeburg County Resource Fair it's been to. And so that's just one of the, one of the ways that we can make sure we get out to people. Not everybody can go over to Joe Jeffords and the workforce center over there. A little ways away, they have transportation issues or whatever they may have. And so we try to make sure with that mobile unit that they get out, they have the opportunity to look for jobs, apply for jobs, have some resume help and all that kind of stuff, to a lot of our more rural areas within the six-county region.
Dr. Mohna, are there additional slides that should be accompanying your presentation?
Additional ones?
Slides.
They're all yours, ma'am.
Oh, okay. So we should just be on this one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I'm just talking from the top of my head, too.
Gotcha. Okay.
Yeah, sorry. I've been newest for 10 years, so sometimes it's extraordinary, yeah, just gotta go in on that, okay?
I understand.
Okay. So, actually, I'm gonna back up, 'cause I think I did miss something that was real, real important before I do workforce.
We're gonna ask you, if you can, close it out for us.
I will. So, community development and REA projects, just wanted to make sure that I mentioned that with the city of Orangeburg, we're working with the Department of Public Utilities, and I believe that that project is about 75 complete, 75% complete right now. Really happy that we could work with y'all on that. With the workforce stuff, we have an Orangeburg County Hiring Summit at the City Gym, April 24th, from 8:00 to 1:00, and we'll be hiring emerging leaders focusing on high school and graduating seniors. And then in addition to that, coming up, it's gonna be early summer, we're gonna have Orangeburg County Youth, which is 16 to 24, a resource fair for them as well. And so those are some of the things that we make sure we do here in the city and in Orangeburg County. If you have more questions, I'm happy to answer them at another time, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Question?
Dr. Mohna, thank you for your presentation. With the potential reduction in federal funding, are you going to ask the state, you know, to give you more money?
So, yes. So right now, on my way down here, I was talking with Al Jenkins, you all know Al Jenkins?
Yes.
And I said, "Guy, we've got real problems out here with the funding, things are not coming in, and we're worried about what's gonna happen in the next budget cycle." And he said, "Yes, please, give us a white paper, tell us where your pain points are." And I give that straight to the senator, and he takes it straight over to the White House. I said, "Great, we'll be happy to do that. I will spread the word around and let you know that." The second one is within the state itself, and yes, sir, we're having those conversations. I did not make it to the delegation meeting here in Orangeburg last night. I had to be over in Calhoun County, but that being said, I am in conversation with, well, email with Senator Hato's assistant, but as many folks as I can possibly tell in regards to, yeah, especially with aging funds, we need help.
Okay. You said you've not been able to speak with Mr. Miller, Henry Miller, you know, for the Samaritan House.
Oh, I was just naming, pulling up a name out of the hat.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
What do you think you can do for Samaritan House, the organization can do for them?
Ah, okay. So with the housing program that we have right now, if somebody has a house that needs to be rehabbed, and it's a senior usually, okay? That what we can help them with is bringing them into the process, looking at the house, seeing if we can help to rehab that. Now, we have a cap of 50,000, okay? But if it goes over a little bit, you know, we can work through that. But the idea is to be able to help to do some of the major repairs on a house, whether it be going through the floor, HVAC unit, or all that. Issue that we have with HUD funding is, once you start a HUD house, a house using HUD funding, you have to bring it up to 100% code. And as you well know, when you have a contractor going in there, they don't know exactly what's gonna be some of the issues in there. And so you may think that you're going in, you're gonna spend $45,000 to rehab a home, and next thing you know, it's going to be, you know, $100,000 or plus. And so that's where the issues come that make it very, very difficult in order to use some of that federal money. What I asked Senator Hato last year, and Representative Gilda Cop Hunter, is to help me with a program for three COGS, to be able to give us $1.5 million that we would each spend over three years, to do things like, we're gonna get the contractors together, "Guys, I need you to do a roof. I need you to do this. I need you to do that." SE Housing stole my idea, took most of the money, and put a program out there, and nobody went for it, because you had to go through SE Housing regulations, which are a lot of HUD regulations. I want a chance to have that money back and make that program work, 'cause I think people in this region, oh, also ours, would they be able to do mobile homes as well? Yeah.
Thank you.
If citizens need assistance with any of these things that you've mentioned, how would they go about doing so?
In workforce, they'd go over to our Workforce Center, which is on Joe Jeffords, okay? With the housing or the aging stuff, the aging stuff, they would go over to the Council on Aging and go over and see Deanne Miller, and we would get them in that way, okay? For some of the governmental stuff, they know who we are, so we can deal with them on that level. On the housing stuff, I will sense Sterling down here to talk with you.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Now, we thank you, we appreciate what you're doing. Continue to work for Orangeburg.
Thank you very much, ma'am. It's always a pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we now have the third one. Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Sean Taylor, CIA AA Softball Championship Tournament, ma'am.
Good evening, Madam Vice Chair, Members of Council, Administrator, Evan. We want to talk a little bit, 'cause spring is here.
Yes.
And we have a lot going on in the month of May, and we want to make sure that our community and everyone is aware of it. So we have some information that we're gonna show on the screen. All right. So with that, the month of May starts with our Rose Festival. Everybody is aware that we got the Rose Festival coming, we have a lot of folks coming in town. And so with the Rose Festival that week, we also have the CIA AA coming that, also that weekend, and we've created a lot of publication for it, and we'll show it here.
The city of Orangeburg is excited to host a 2025 CIA AA Softball Championship at Orangeburg Recreation Park, May 1st through May 3rd. We'll welcome eight teams from the Central Undercollegiate Athletic Association, bringing teams, families, and fans along the East Coast to the Garden City. Join us May 1st through May 3rd at Orangeburg Recreation Park for the CIA AA Softball Championship. More information, call 803-533-6020.
And so we're gonna cap off that week with the CIA AA tournament. So the first week in May, we have a lot of activity going on with the Rose Festival and the CIA AA happening in the city during that time, and so we're excited about that. Even, we're gonna have the CIA AA, they're gonna do a community project during this week, leading up to the Rose Festival. And so we're excited to have all that going on in town, and we'll be happy to answer the questions that you all may have.
Are there any questions for our director? Just wanna say congratulations, and we certainly hope that people will turn out, and I know they will, because it is so nice out there to see different teams playing out there. So we're just happy about it.
All right. Thank you very much.
We're asking the council members to go out and cheer you on.
How many days will that be for the ball field?
So the tournament will start on May 1st to the 3rd, but teams will start coming in town on April 29th.
Oh, yeah.
They'll start coming in town on April 29th, but games will begin Thursday at 10:00 on May 1st.
If you can, I think yours, try and invite Coca-Cola Bar Company out there to participate with you.
Okay.
That's a fine family, and I think it's some hard feelings on the last thing, and it would be good to have Coca-Cola out there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else? If not, thank you so much. Okay, we're now ready for our administrator, new business.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Kit, Council. Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to take a moment to thank Director Taylor and Public Works Department for all, I'm sorry, the Parks and Rec Department and the Public Works Department for that matter, but the Parks and Rec Department for all the good work that they're doing, especially with the Rose Festival coming, and the work that they're doing in the gardens and getting that prepared, and also for the CIA AA tournament, which is a great opportunity for us to host and once again show off our facilities and show off our community. So thank you, Mr. Taylor, for you and your hard work on that. For your consideration, we have, I'm seeking the authorization to enter into an agreement. A couple of years ago, well, not quite a couple of years ago, we received a $350,000 US Department of Transportation RACE Grant to do a study to construct the pedestrian overpass, which would basically go across Magnolia and go across the railroad from the universities to the railroad corner. And so we put an RFP out and received two bids back, and the winning proposal based on the evaluated criteria was AE Comm. And so I'm just asking for your authorization to enter into an agreement, so they can do this planning study before construction can begin on the pedestrian overpass.
Is there any questions for our attorney?
Ms. Evan?
Yes, sir.
We're talking about the bridge from the colleges across the railroad, right?
Yes, sir.
The one that would receive some millions from Claver?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And are you saying that we have two companies that bid for the $350,000?
To do the planning study, yes, sir.
To do the planning stage.
Yes, sir.
Now, does this include architectural drawing?
I'm sorry.
Does this include the architectural drawing for the, you know, for the project?
No, sir.
Do you have any design?
No, sir. This just, this would encompass the study to make sure that it goes across the rail line, it's, you know, the right height and all the, meets all the federal regulations that go with going across a rail line. So it does not encompass having the architectural drawings for, once that bid goes out for the actual construction, and then whoever wins that bid will provide the architectural drawings and for the project.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Who could pay for that project?
The pedestrian overpass? That would be paid for from a RACE grant. We received a $22.8 million RACE grant. We were awarded it. We were awarded it, yes, sir.
Now, we just want to say that Ms. Knotts is on the Zoom.
Zoom.
Zoom. Okay. If no other questions, we get a motion for the authorization to accept winning bid for railroad corner pedestrian overpass studies?
I move that we accept any winning bid for the railroad corner pedestrian overpass study.
Can we get a second? It's been properly moved by Dr. Kalu and second by Ms. Greveous. All in favor is the motion, let it be known as aye.
Aye.
Opposes? Ayes have it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The next item for your consideration is also a grant. We received the US Department of Agricultural Rural Development Grant in the amount of $193,700 to repair the Orangeburg Department of Public Utilities Safety Headquarters roof and the parking area at the Chestnut Street Fire Station. We put an RFP out for this work and received five responses. The winning bid was land roofing. They received the highest score based upon the evaluated criteria, and I ask for your authorization to enter into an agreement for them to make these repairs.
Any questions for our administrator? If not, may we pass for a motion?
I make a motion to accept the recommendation on the fire study. I mean, please. Second.
Properly moved by Mr. Stroman, second by Dr. Kalu. All in favor, let it be known by sign aye.
Aye.
Oppose, opposes? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Questions, Karen?
Thank you.
Thank you. Matters pertaining to the Department of Public Utilities, Mr. Warren.
Good afternoon, Mr., evening, Ms. Madam.
Good afternoon, Mr. Uh, evening, Miss, Miss Madam Chair and Members of Council, excuse me. Uh, so used to have him, Mayor Butler.
I know.
Uh, before I go, I do wanna, uh, thank, uh, Dr. Monar and his staff for assisting us. If you recall, we did the Quick Town Project, uh, 2.5 million, I believe, to improve the water lines and service in that area. So, that project is, has gone well and, uh, I, I would say we not only improved that, our water lines, but other parts of the neighborhood as well. So, thank them for their work. Council has, I did put this at your desk, um, and, yes, this is a flyer that you should have. We will call and remind you, but, um, we are scheduling our annual, uh, employee appreciation food truck event. Council has participated before. Uh, we typically try to do this, uh, the week ahead of, uh, Rose Festival weekend. And so, uh, it will be a joint effort. Uh, Sydney and I have, uh, um, got the word out to all the employees of the City of Orangeburg, DPU and, and everybody. Uh, we'll meet over at our operations center, uh, and, and we will have a grand time with good food and, uh, and, uh, hopefully you will be able to join us.
Okay.
Um, you have before you item number six, third reading of a series ordinance, making provisions for the terms and conditions of combined public utility system revenue borrowing of the City of Orangeburg. As you recall, we are, uh, in this process because of our capital project planning. Uh, we are asking council to approve this ordinance. It would allow us to about borrow 13.1 million dollars from the South Carolina Revolving Fund, uh, at a rate of 2.1% uh, over 20 years. And this will allow us to do, uh, water plant improvements at our John F. Pearson Water Plant and Lagoon, uh, which would improve our operations immensely going forward. There's nothing that has changed from the ordinance from the last reading and I would ask that you give third final reading.
Ask any questions? Anyone? If not, third reading of a series ordinance, making provisions for the terms and conditions of combined public utility system revenue borrowing for the, of the City of Orangeburg. May I have a motion, please?
I move for passage.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Dr. Kalu, seconded by Mr. Strowman. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposes? None. All right, thank you much.
Madam Chair and Members of Council, uh, the second item is a resolution recognizing April 18th as Line Workers Appreciation Day. Every year, we try to recognize, uh, the hard work of our electric line, uh, workers across the City of Orangeburg and the county that we serve. Uh, these gentlemen, uh, put their selves on the line every time they go out. Uh, they're well-trained, highly, uh, skilled, professional, uh, line workers and we wanna show our appreciation, uh, for the work that they do, uh, in times of distress in our community. And so, uh, we'd ask that you approve this resolution recognizing line workers appreciation day.
Any questions? If not, may we get a motion for the resolution?
I move for passage of the resolution recognizing April 18th as a line workers appreciation day.
Second.
It's been properly moved, it's been properly moved by Dr. Kalu, seconded by Ms. Greivers. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposes? Ayes have it. Thank you. Number eight, John F. Pearson Water Treatment Plant Partnership for Safe Waters. President's Award for Treatment Plant Optimizization.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, just wanted, this is just for information for the council and the public. Uh, the, uh, John F. Pearson Water Treatment Plant has been awarded the Partnership for Safe Waters President's Award. Uh, this, uh, recognizes our dedication to water quality and innovation and op, uh, operational excellence. Uh, you can't just be average to get this award. You have to be better than average. You have to be really good. And I want you to know that your, uh, uh, water plant, water treatment plant citizens, uh, uh, can rest assured that we are an excellent facility and, uh, this, uh, represents the hard work. Not only that the council has, uh, dedicated to funding projects that improve the plant and give us an opportunity to be innovative. Uh, it means we've gone above and above, above and beyond, uh, what is, what is expected. And so, I want you to know that your, your dedication to that and the employees' dedication, uh, are, are, are paying off as we continue to make those improvements and be recognized across, uh, across the, the country and the state.
Any questions or comments?
I just want to commend our DPU, you know, for the great work they are doing to, you know, make our water safe. You know, for drinking and other things that we use the water for. You know, thank you all for doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Let us give them a round of applause for that. So, that is wonderful. Thank you so much. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Uh, that is all I have for today.
Okay. Well, you need to come back or anything, um, for the executive session? The exa, uh, we will go into executive session. Number nine, discussion of negotiations incidents to propose contractual arrangements and propose sale or purchase of property. The receipt of legal advice or other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege. Project review SC code section dot 30, dot 30 dash 4 dash 78 two. And let me read it. Return, we will return to open session after the motion has been made and go into, uh, executive session. We will return. May we have a motion?
Make a motion, go into second session.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Mr. Strowman, seconded by Dr. Kalu. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposes?
Ayes have it.
Uh, would someone make a motion to, um...
You don't have to do it.
To dismiss the, miss us?
I make a motion to go into second session. You do that later.
We'll make the second session now.
Okay. All right. We will go in. We will be back not long, hopefully. We will be back not long, hopefully. It's not long.
Thank you so much. We ask for a motion to come back into executive session, please.
A move that will come back to the general session after the executive session.
This is probably moved by Dr. Kalu, second by Mr. Strowman. All in favor, if I sign?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Mr. City Administrator?
Thank you Mayor Protem Kit and Council. The next item for your consideration is first reading of an ordinance authorizing the option to transfer and approval of transfer of approximately 1.78 acres of real property with improvements, if any, located at 351 Langston Street, TMS number 0173-17-31-006.000. As we discussed, this is related to Project Riverview. The developers asked for an option to purchase the property. The option would be for up to two years at six-month intervals. And this, again, is related to Project Riverview.
Any questions? If not, may we have a motion?
I move for approval of the first reading based on the discussion in the executive session with proper documentation and evaluation at the end.
May we have a second? Can I second it?
Yes, you can.
Second. So now do I carry it? It's probably moved by Dr. Kalu, second by Kit. All in favor, would you use your sign by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposeds?
No.
Ayes have it.
You want the ayes?
Well, yes, so the ayes are...
And I'm abstaining.
Miss Knight, abstaining?
Can I ask a question with that? If she abstains, does the abstention goes with the majority or what?
I don't think so, but I will defer to...
Defer to the lawyer?
Yes.
But no. The abstention doesn't count in the affirmative group. So it's the equivalent of an...
So it's nil, okay.
So it's reapproved?
What did you do?
Okay. Ayes have it. The ayes have it. Thank you so very much and thank everyone for being with us this evening. Come back and visit us at any time. Thank you so much.
We have to vote to adjourn.
You got to vote for their adjournment. Okay?
Okay. I move for adjournment.
Second. This is probably moved by Dr. Kalu, second by Mr. Strowman. All in favor, if I sign?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Mr. City Administrator?
Thank you Mayor Protem Kit and Council. The next item for your consideration is first reading of an ordinance authorizing the option to transfer and approval of transfer of approximately 1.78 acres of real property with improvements, if any, located at 351 Langston Street, TMS number 0173-17-31-006.000. As we discussed, this is related to Project Riverview. The developers asked for an option to purchase the property. The option would be for up to two years at six-month intervals. And this, again, is related to Project Riverview.
Any questions? If not, may we have a motion?
I move for approval of the first reading based on the discussion in the executive session with proper documentation and evaluation at the end.
May we have a second? Can I second it?
Yes, you can.
Second. So now do I carry it? It's probably moved by Dr. Kalu, second by Kit. All in favor, would you use your sign by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposeds?
No.
One abstaining.
You want the ayes?
Well, yes, so the ayes are...
And I'm abstaining.
Miss Knight, abstaining?
Can I ask a question with that? If she abstains, does the abstention goes with the majority or what?
I don't think so, but I will defer to...
Defer to the lawyer?
Yes.
The abstention doesn't count in the affirmative group. So it's the equivalent of an...
So it's nil, okay.
So it's reapproved?
What did you do? Okay.
Ayes have it. The ayes have it. Thank you so very much and thank everyone for being with us this evening. Come back and visit us at any time. Thank you so much.
We have to vote to adjourn.
You got to vote for their adjournment. Okay?
Okay. I move for adjournment.
Second. This is probably moved by Dr. Kalu, second by Mr. Strowman. All in favor, if I sign?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Mr. City Administrator?
Thank you Mayor Protem Kit and Council. The next item for your consideration is first reading of an ordinance authorizing the option to transfer and approval of transfer of approximately 1.78 acres of real property with improvements, if any, located at 351 Langston Street, TMS number 0173-17-31-006.000. As we discussed, this is related to Project Riverview. The developers asked for an option to purchase the property. The option would be for up to two years at six-month intervals. And this, again, is related to Project Riverview.
Any questions? If not, may we have a motion?
I move for approval of the first reading based on the discussion in the executive session with proper documentation and evaluation at the end.
May we have a second? Can I second it?
Yes, you can.
Second. So now do I carry it? It's probably moved by Dr. Kalu, second by Mr. Strowman. All in favor, if I sign?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Mr. City Administrator?
Thank you Mayor Protem Kit and Council. The next item for your consideration is first reading of an ordinance authorizing the option to transfer and approval of transfer of approximately 1.78 acres of real property with improvements, if any, located at 351 Langston Street, TMS number 0173-17-31-006.000. As we discussed, this is related to Project Riverview. The developers asked for an option to purchase the property. The option would be for up to two years at six-month intervals. And this, again, is related to Project Riverview.
Any questions? If not, may we have a motion?
I move for approval of the first reading based on the discussion in the executive session with proper documentation and evaluation at the end.
May we have a second? Can I second it?
Yes, you can.
Second. So now do I carry it? It's probably moved by Dr. Kalu, second by Mr. Strowman. All in favor, would you use your sign by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposeds?
No.
Ayes have it.
You want the ayes?
Well, yes, so the ayes are...
And I'm abstaining.
Miss Knight, abstaining?
Can I ask a question with that? If she abstains, does the abstention goes with the majority or what?
I don't think so, but I will defer to...
Defer to the lawyer?
Yes. But no. The abstention doesn't count in the affirmative group. So it's the equivalent of an...
So it's nil, okay.
So it's reapproved?
What did you do? Okay.
Ayes have it. The ayes have it. Thank you so very much and thank everyone for being with us this evening. Come back and visit us at any time. Thank you so much.
We have to vote to adjourn.
You got to vote for their adjournment. Okay?
Okay. I move for adjournment.
Second. This is probably moved by Dr. Kalu, second by Mr. Strowman. All in favor, if I sign?
Aye.
Aye. Opposeds?
No.
Ayes have it.
You want the ayes?
Well, yes, so the ayes are...
And I'm abstaining.
Miss Knight, abstaining?
Can I ask a question with that? If she abstains, does the abstention goes with the majority or what?
I don't think so, but I will defer to...
Defer to the lawyer?
Yes. But no. The abstention doesn't count in the affirmative group.
Doesn't count.
So it's the equivalent of an...
Okay.
So it's nil, okay.
So it's reapproved?
What did you do? Okay.
Ayes have it. The ayes have it. Thank you so very much and thank everyone for being with us this evening. Come back and visit us at any time. Thank you so much.
We have to vote to adjourn. We have to vote for their adjournment.
You got to vote for their adjournment. Okay?
Okay.
Ayes have it. The ayes have it. Thank you so very much and thank everyone for being with us this evening. Come back and visit us at any time. Thank you so much.
We have to vote to adjourn. We have to vote to adjourn.
You got to vote for their adjournment. Okay?
Okay. I move for adjournment.
Second. This is probably moved by Dr. Kalu, second by Mr. Strowman. All in favor, if I sign?
Aye.
Aye. Opposeds?
No.
Ayes have it.
You want the ayes?
Well, yes, so the ayes are...
And I'm abstaining.
Miss Knight, abstaining?
Can I ask a question with that? If she abstains, does the abstention goes with the majority or what?
I don't think so, but I will defer to...
Defer to the lawyer?
Yes. But no. The abstention doesn't count in the affirmative group.
Doesn't count.
So it's the equivalent of an...
Okay. So it's nil, okay.
So it's reapproved?
What did you do? Okay.
Ayes have it. The ayes have it. Thank you so very much and thank everyone for being with us this evening. Come back and visit us at any time. Thank you so much.
We have to vote to adjourn. We have to vote to adjourn.
You got to vote for their adjournment. Okay?
Okay. I move for adjournment.
Second. This is probably moved by Dr. Kalu, second by Mr. Strowman. All in favor, if I sign?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Mr. City Administrator?
Thank you Mayor Protem Kit and Council. The next item for your consideration is first reading of an ordinance authorizing the option to transfer and approval of transfer of approximately 1.78 acres of real property with improvements, if any, located at 351 Langston Street, TMS number 0173-17-31-006.000. As we discussed, this is related to Project Riverview. The developers asked for an option to purchase the property. The option would be for up to two years at six-month intervals. And this, again, is related to Project Riverview.
Any questions? If not, may we have a motion?
I move for approval of the first reading based on the discussion in the executive session with proper documentation and evaluation at the end.
May we have a second? Can I second it?
Yes, you can.
Second. So now do I carry it? It's probably moved by Dr. Kalu, second by Mr. Strowman. All in favor, would you use your sign by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposeds?
No.
Ayes have it.
You want the ayes?
Well, yes, so the ayes are...
And I'm abstaining.
Miss Knight, abstaining?
Can I ask a question with that? If she abstains, does the abstention goes with the majority or what?
I don't think so, but I will defer to...
Defer to the lawyer?
Yes. But no. The abstention doesn't count in the affirmative group.
Doesn't count.
So it's the equivalent of an...
Okay.
So it's nil, okay.
So it's reapproved?
What did you do? Okay.
Ayes have it. The ayes have it. Thank you so very much and thank everyone for being with us this evening. Come back and visit us at any time. Thank you so much.
We have to vote to adjourn. We have to vote to adjourn.
You got to vote for their adjournment. Okay?
Okay. I move for adjournment.
Second. This is probably moved by Dr. Kalu, second by Mr. Strowman. All in favor, if I sign?
Aye.
Aye. Opposeds?
No.
Ayes have it.
You want the ayes?
Well, yes, so the ayes are...
And I'm abstaining.
Miss Knight, abstaining?
Can I ask a question with that? If she abstains, does the abstention goes with the majority or what?
I don't think so, but I will defer to...
Defer to the lawyer?
Yes. But no. The abstention doesn't count in the affirmative group.
Doesn't count.
So it's the equivalent of an...
Okay.
So it's nil, okay.
So it's reapproved?
What did you do? Okay.
Ayes have it. The ayes have it. Thank you so very much and thank everyone for being with us this evening. Come back and visit us at any time. Thank you so much.
We have to vote to adjourn. We have to vote to adjourn.
You got to vote for their adjournment. Okay?
Okay. I move for adjournment.
Second. This is probably moved by Dr. Kalu, second by Mr. Strowman. All in favor, if I sign?
Aye.
Aye. Opposeds?
No.
Ayes have it.
You want the ayes?
Well, yes, so the ayes are...
And I'm abstaining.
Miss Knight, abstaining?
Can I ask a question with that? If she abstains, does the abstention goes with the majority or what? I don't think so, but I will defer to...
Defer to the lawyer?
Yes. But no. The abstention doesn't count in the affirmative group.
Doesn't count.
So it's the equivalent of an...
Okay.
So it's nil, okay.
So it's reapproved?
What did you do? Okay.
Okay.
Ayes have it. The ayes have it. Thank you so very much and thank everyone for being with us this evening. Come back and visit us at any time. Thank you so much.
We have to vote to adjourn. We have to vote to adjourn.